It is seven o'clock, so I will call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Sevastopol Board of Education and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We will have a closed session this evening as per Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five, forens one, foren C. Considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, item A administrative contracts, item B teacher contracts. I would like to welcome this evening Mr. Steve Cromwell, who is our interim superintendent. Certainly a very familiar face, spent five years of his life with us a while back, and we are delighted to have him back.
Thank you.
Welcome, Steve. Do we have any recognition this evening of anyone? Okay. We will go then to guest comments. I will remind everyone that each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Mr. Beam will do the timing for us. There will be no handing off of minutes. And we would ask that all comments must abide by the rules of civility. There is a poster on the back table in case you need a refresher regarding the civility. I would also remind everyone that there is no place for defamatory comments at this session. If you feel that you have more than three minutes worth of commentary, or you feel your comments might defame someone, please contact Mr. Cromwell and he will appropriately address your concern and then follow up with whatever needs to take place. If it needs to come back to the board, he will certainly do that. So just a reminder to everyone on that, so that everyone is comfortable at the meeting. With that, we'll begin with Mr. Warwick.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Cromwell for, I guess, interrupting your retirement to come back and that's very appreciated. It shows us your sincerity towards this school and willingness to help us at this time.
Thank you.
The question I have, this is not going to be real long, I just have a question probably for you, Sue, as chairman, from board chairs to board chairs, as I was the chairman of NWTC and we're all under the same statutes with regards to chapter eighteen point eight five. In the last week's issue of the newspaper, there was a letter to the editor from council, and it started off, "The board has asked that I, as its attorney, clarify the factual bias basis for certain information that has been subject to media attention." My question is, when did the board take that action to authorize the council to do that? And because it's really not a, it really isn't germane for that type of discussion to be an executive session, because it doesn't deal with salaries, disciplinary things, or anything that I can't find. I can't find it in nineteen point eight five, nor in my work at NWTC would that be part of our executive session.
That was approved by the attorney for closed session.
In executive session?
Yes.
But legal issues that do not affect the entire district aren't germane.
It didn't affect the entire district.
But it really seems to be more written towards the recall.
There were misstatements in the media that needed to be corrected.
But that's not a legal issue, now.
Yes.
So I really think that there was a violation of the, of closed session under the statutes. And I don't remember you ever coming back in to open session and asking for approval of that. Because it doesn't, that does not deal with either salaries, disciplinary actions of individuals.
Yes, it did.
There's nothing in this letter dealing with discipline.
Yes, there was.
It does? Well, then, then you should point it out to us, because I don't see that.
It dealt with misstatements in regard to legal fees for contracts.
With all due respect, I don't believe that falls under.
Well, that's your opinion, sir.
And I do think it's really a little strange for the board to have its legal counsel write a letter to the editor, and then it says afterwards that the board asks, that it says the board collectively asks for the statement not to be made. Fifteen seconds.
That is not true.
That's not true? Okay. Thank you very much.
Rachel Schardner. Candace Warwick. Tracy Jones. Okay, there is no one else who wish to speak to the board. We'll move then to consent agenda. Item A, to approve the minutes of the regular school board meeting, July twenty-one, 2016. We need a motion.
Move that we approve a consent agenda, item A, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is approved. Item B, to approve the employment recommendations, resignations, and retirements, we will take those separately. Let's go to item C, the donations. Any donations, Steve?
None at this time.
Okay. Then let's go back to B, and we do have Mr. Cromwell's contract to approve. You have all seen the contract, and you all given information on any changes that were made, so we need a motion to approve the hiring of Mr. Cromwell as our interim superintendent.
Move that we approve the hiring of Stephen Cromwell as the Sevastopol School District interim superintendent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is approved. We have a couple of special education teachers listed here. Steve, you want to talk about that?
You know, I'm smiling because it's pretty bad that a superintendent can only get his own contract approved and can't get anybody else approved. But the, the problem is, you know, these people were interviewed, inspected by the committees, initially accepted the offer of an appointment. However, one of the candidates, criminal background check showed something that we questioned and didn't feel comfortable with. Talking with the candidate, we decided to rescind the offer. The other special education teacher had initially accepted, had a good rapport, and it was a good interview and a good sequence of discussion. At the last minute, that was yesterday, due to some personal issues in location, she decided that she would have to not come, she couldn't do it. The dean of students interviews also, I understand, went very well, there were some quality candidates. We selected a candidate. Problem is, selecting someone that is the easy part, sometimes agreeing on the financial issues of the contract gets to be a real sticky. This was the case, and this is a, she comes from a rather high-powered financial district north of Green Bay, and in finding out that she was interviewing here, I think that we ran into some competition on salary that we were not able to match. So she also withdrew for that reason. So we're back to the drawing board, and listen, that's not all bad. You know, we, we need candidates that want to come here, and are dedicated, and are agreeing on what we can do financially. So we're going, not going back to the board on the first candidate, the special education candidate that with, that we withdrew on the criminal background check issues, we've elected to combine some resources in our special education department, and we do not have to repost that position. We're going to go with what we have. And we can, I'm assured by Kathy that it is no infringement upon the teaching situation of any of our staff, it can be managed pretty well. The other one, we have to repost. The dean of students position, you know, we were faced with, are we going to try to force it before school and do it quick and dirty, or are we going to take our time? It looks like we're going to take our time, develop that job description a little better, and then speak to the board really of, you know, you can get some good candidates for this, but some of them come from high-paying jobs, and, you know, we can't, we are what we are, we can afford what we can afford. So we have to get candidates to line up with our idea of what is fair. So, I know, I get mine approved and none of the other ones, but anyway, that doesn't seem right, but it's, it's what happened, and, you know, I don't see it as a real negative. I think there's a chance for us to do it even better. So we're going back to the drawing.
Okay, any discussion, anyone? All right, yeah, good luck in finding.
It's a tough time of the year to find.
Yes, it is.
Probably worth thanking everybody who's been in the process so far, that they kind of got to start over, so who all supported that, thank you.
A lot of work goes into that, absolutely. Okay, a few items. I had an email from Kelly McDowell, some of you have met Kelly, she is with the Fair Aid Coalition, and she had two things in mind when she emailed me. We do have a seat on the Fair Aid Coalition Board, which Linda held for several years. Steve held that seat prior to Linda, and this is an important group from the standpoint that they work with districts like ours who receive no equalization aid from the state. So Kelly is asking if Steve would be willing to assume that seat on the executive board, and she also said that the Fair Aid Coalition is making some progress on the minimum aid proposal. Representative Jeff Merceau, who happens to be a Republican from Crivets, is requesting that a $1,000 per pupil minimum aid be included in the 2017-19 state budget. This is a state budget year, so this is an important feature that we're looking at. He's prepared a proposal outlining the rationale for minimum aid that may be discussed at an August seventeen Assembly GOP caucus in Madison. It is important that we reach out now to other Assembly Republican lawmakers to ask that they speak in support of the minimum aid proposal, should there be an opportunity to do so. And Tina Van Meere, who was the superintendent at Gibraltar, was in on the call of the executive board, and she will be touching base with Representative Kitchens. But Kelly is also asking that we all touch base with Representative Kitchens, so that he would support this $1,000 minimum aid for each student. So I would encourage anyone who is so inclined, including people in the audience, to contact Representative Kitchens and let him know that we would strongly support this. She did mention some key points in her email. She said, "No aid districts no longer qualify for equalization aid, but receive special adjustment aid," which we do, "but which decreases by fifteen percent every year." I think we're at thirty-some thousand.
Yeah, it's getting almost insignificant now.
Yes. And she said, "In 2016-17, four districts, North Lakeland, Geneva Jase, Four Mercer, and Washington Island, no longer even receive special adjustment aid." So this minimum aid proposal is really an important one, and I think we need to encourage Representative Kitchens to get on board with that.
Sue, would you tell us the last, Jeff's last name again?
M, let me spell it. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing. M-U-R-S-A-U, Merceau.
Okay, thank you.
And he's from Crivets. And then, in regard to aid, there was an article recently, and Linda had referred to this when she was here, that we were not getting the transportation aid. We've gotten it some years, some years we don't, and there was a big article on this whole transportation aid. River Valley was one district that was referred to here, has fewer than five students per square mile, but didn't qualify for funding, like us, because it's able to hold down its transportation costs by being more efficient. And that's exactly what has happened here. We're very efficient with our transportation costs, so consequently, we don't qualify for the transportation aid. And the person from, the business manager from River Valley says, "It feels like River Valley is being penalized for efficiently transporting eighty-seven percent of its students while covering a geographical area of 296 square miles." And the same is happening here. Adams Friendship has about three students per square mile, and they don't qualify. The district did receive the aid the past two years, and last year got $163,000, but got nothing this year. This is because last summer, the district revamped its bus routes, realigned the district to reduce transportation spending. That drop was enough to disqualify them for funding for this year. So same story as what we're dealing with.
Not much of an incentive for.
No, no, exactly, exactly. Now, given all of that, we did talk this spring, I think, about having a listening session with Representative Kitchens. And I had talked with his office at that time, and we decided that September might be a good time for this, once the summer rushes over and people are settled back into routine. I think we need to set a date for this, so I would be open to suggestions from this group for a date for the listening session, and I believe the intent was to open this up to the general public, Representative Kitchens. And I think it's important to do this now because of this being a budget year. So your thoughts on some dates, and then I can run them past Representative Kitchens' aide, who I've been working with.
Are there days that he is here? Do we know are there days that he's here in the county versus in Madison?
Well, usually, usually, like, they go Tuesday through Thursday.
Thursday, right, so Monday or.
But, you know, that's usually when they would have, you know, committee meetings and stuff, you know?
A Friday.
Because they're not in session now until the next session.
A Friday wouldn't be a good day, but maybe a Monday?
Monday, possibly.
Well, the fifth is Labor Day.
Probably the twelfth, nineteenth, or twenty-sixth.
Any preference on those days?
What's on our school calendar, anything?
Twelve, nineteenth, or twenty-sixth.
When is the bill coming up, do you?
Well, there won't be anything submitted until the new session in January.
And when does that start, January?
Yeah.
Yeah, the seventeenth is when they have a GOP meeting on that topic.
Seventeenth of September?
Of August, seventeenth of August, the Assembly GOP caucus.
Why don't we say the twelfth, and you can count on the twelfth, give them the option of the nineteenth, and see if one of those might be, you know, just start from the top and work right on.
I can do that. I had a phone call from Lou Burschbauer at WASB, just as a reminder that WASB would like to give us a presentation on their search service for superintendents. And I did share with him that Steve was with us at this point as an interim, but that we would be looking this fall perhaps to have a presentation by WASB. There's no cost involved, there's no obligation. And then I also had a contact from McPherson and Jacobson, which is an executive recruitment and development service out of Omaha, and they indicated that they would be interested in coming. No obligation, and they did send a lot of brochures along, so if you wanted to take one of those, and if you think that we'd want to invite them as well, we can do that. And we also talked through this way about CISA VII.
What if we did a meeting as a working session and had all three come in and hear them all at the same night?
Can we do that? If we can coordinate the date.
And maybe in November, things might slow down a little bit, but, you know, the budget should be in place, and Steve will have a couple months on the job.
Thanks.
Couple more months.
Couple more months. Sue, who recommended these?
They just sent me a letter. Nobody recommended them that I know of, I just got them mailing.
There are quite a few companies that do this, obviously, but you have to be really careful, because you can run the cost up exorbitantly and you don't get a return. WASB, I, I'm not promoting them, but they're reasonable in cost, and I've been through their searches on the end of applicant. They help you select questions that the candidates have to do written responses to, and, you know, those type of techniques get you a little deeper into the interview. Some people just interview really good, you know, and that doesn't give you enough depth. So you get written responses on questions like budgeting questions, how do you develop a budget in the school system, and those are the types of things. That's the kind of input, I think, you're looking for.
And there's no saying that by paying somebody else that you're going to get any better of an applicant pool.
That's what I mean.
I guess it'd be my recommendation, Sue, that we just stick with WASB and ask them to come forward, and if we're really not happy with the product, and it just doesn't seem like it's going to meet our needs, why?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to hand it out.
Did you want to talk to CISA VII, or stick with W, just at WASB?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know anything about CISA VII.
I think we should listen to both of them. There's no obligation.
I agree, I've heard good things, some other school boards said that WASB is very helpful, and they're plugged right into what we really need, so I thought.
Gibraltar used WASB in their last search.
Okay, and then there are some new regulations out now for transportation, for buses, for lighting and so on, and I'm assuming Rock is all up to date on that.
Yes, in fact, he approached me yesterday with some questions and comments about that.
Yeah, WASB.
He's right on that.
Sent out a flyer on that. And I just wanted to mention, in the Wisconsin School News Journal this month, there is an article on mental health services in the schools. Interesting, it's something we've been talking about.
I have a question about the call to action on the $1,000 per pupil.
Yes.
Sometimes people would write to their representative if they kind of knew what to say. And is it inappropriate for the school district to have a statement that says, "This Sevastopol School District can find it beneficial in its budget to support the $1,000 per pupil bill." If you want to support that, write your representative. Inappropriate?
Yeah, you're talking about a little boilerplate language that can be helpful, and I, I agree. You know, one thing that I have to comment on, this is a difficult sell. People of the districts that receive state aid, they're not welcoming giving us $600,000. That's what a $1,000 per student generally. So, you know, their, their response is, "You are already getting an inordinate amount of money, now you want to get some of ours." So it's, it's a hard sell. You know, you sell that from the perspective that, hey, we're students in Wisconsin, we're all the same, you know, we have our issues as well as you have yours, and fairness is that we share, and maybe not as big of a piece as you, but we share it somewhat. So, yeah, you have to, if you go off half-cocked on that, say, you know, "We haven't gotten any money, and we're poor," and this kind of stuff, that's not going to sell. So I'd be glad to do, you know, some boilerplate that people could then inject their own.
And the boilerplate and the address of who they should send it to, and then it, you know, people can get that, I don't know if we can email it out or whatever, and then people, because it does matter to contact your representative, they do pay attention to how many of those emails or letters or calls they get, so watch for that.
Representative Kitchens, I think, will be the best one to contact.
And the Fair Aid group might already have boilerplate.
Yes, they may, they may. Okay, moving then to all business, facilities, Steve? Rock isn't, oh, Rock is here, okay. Come on up, Rock, I can see you back there.
He just walked in.
He just walked in. He has to help me, I'm still trying to find my way back around.
I still have to get a box.
That's those breadcrumbs all through school.
Facilities, essentially all we've done since the last meeting was they, they finished up all the tree work out back. That's all complete. We got the check from the, from the forester, so as far as we're concerned, I guess it's all done. Got some more quotes on some windows today, because I have a project in the works to replace a number of windows in the school, so, but that'll probably be the fourth time anybody else's here, so. Other than that, not a whole lot, so still keeping on track to get school open on the first of September. We have a little section of flooring to scrub and wax yet, and we're moving around the teacher's workroom and a conference room as we speak, so that's kind of the two things that are going on right now. Painting's proceeding, hopefully we'll be all done in time for, not hopefully, we will be all done in time for the start of school on September one.
I expected that.
And with that, if anyone has any questions?
I think a lot of former alumni that walk through the building would be surprised how many spaces that used to be closets are now closets.
I found a closet the other day that we could use.
Oh, really?
Behind the library. You can put somebody in there.
I hope when you look around, you look at the gray door frames now.
Yeah, it looks great, nice.
I think it really sends off a lot of areas.
And the gym doors look real nice.
Yeah, yeah, sends off a lot of areas really nice, so.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the finance committee proposal, Dave had given us a proposal.
What I would, what I would offer today is, I have a proposed charter out there, but I think what would be making sense with everything settling in in a busy time of the year, I'd like to meet with Mr. Cromwell, if he'd allow that, and kind of talk about how we start into this without being a burden at the beginning of the year, and just kind of make sure some of the goals and objectives he would support that, and then depending on the other principals, if they're appropriate to come in, just so we kick this off, kind of, because before what I was saying is, some background, is we're looking at a committee that we could kind of get involved, make sure we're all kind of on the same page for some priorities. That'll help for communication in the future on referendums, it'll make sure we know all the priorities. As we have budget shortfalls, it'll be quicker and more consistent decision-making on those priorities. But I think it's going to be a collaborative group, but, and eventually we might have some community members to support that, and how often we meet, and what the first few things are, I think it would make sense to kind of think through that with the schools so that we just don't, I don't lay out a big burdenous schedule, that wouldn't make sense. And I did have that experience or understanding on this schedule and the budget cycle, so, and hopefully I might get some time of yours tomorrow, and we'll see if we can just talk briefly on that.
Sure, sure, you know, I welcome that. The first thing, you know, is getting everyone up to speed on the fact that discretionary money in the school district is not a large part of our budget. By the time you pay salaries and benefits and other insurance costs and stuff like that, discretionary money makes a small, up a small part of it. But it's helpful for everyone to understand that fact, where the majority of our money goes. And so I, I welcome the discussion, Dave, and then we'll.
Well, it's good, because that's actually kind of why I was kind of pushing and encouraging it selfishly, because it was my own education that is required to understand all of it. I met with Linda a little bit, went through some of it, to realize the depth and the complexity of it, but I think that'll help us for referendums and stuff like that, when people realize we're not. we're not sitting on a pot of cash that we're throwing around, and when these debates come out for, you know, the better we can all communicate the same facts. So that's kind of all I really had for today, and I need to keep moving on that, but something more reasonable, but finally recommend like the first meeting and protocol and stuff like that, recommended agenda, if that's okay.
Okay. All right. New business then? Item A is action on 6603 agreement with Southern Door for school psychologist services. Anything on that, Steve?
Well, I think you have a copy of that agreement in your packet. These are common agreements for shared services with these 6603s, but we've been doing these with the other schools in the door for ages. And this one, we don't have our own psychologist on staff, so we have to either contract with CISA VII, contract with a private psychologist, and we get way more bait for the buck in contracting with Southern Door. So the contract itself says that we're going to share services and gives the financial formula for determining the cost and the end analysis. So this has my, we don't really have much choice, for one thing, but anyway, this is the best way to equalize services and be efficient, so I recommend we approve this.
And we have the same person back the next year?
Yes.
I did have an opportunity to work a little bit with her when I was working at Southern Door, and she is a very bright woman.
Oh, yes.
Very talented young woman.
This is working fine for us.
Okay, we need a motion.
See, I just have a question. First of all, $60 an hour, that's a steal for a psychological service. My questions are around, I didn't see in the contract any kind of codicil for emergency services, like if you needed an emergency consult from a psychologist, or an emergency test, or an evaluation on a student, is that usual and customary that they wouldn't have any kind of emergency language?
Yes, it is pretty much, because when you're doing these contracts, you know, emergency language can affect the types of services they can provide their own district. So usually, this, and the question's a really good one, because, you know, we could have an influx of emergencies and we need more services, usually, I try to work that through the CISA. And, you know, they have a segment of their program that they provide special ed services to our district. If we can't do it there, then, you know, there's times when we've had to contract privately. We try to keep that to a minimum, but in an emergency service, we would absolutely do that. But that would be outside of this contract.
Well, that was, and I follow a question to that, because I saw in the contract that you actually set your budget before you sign the contract?
Yeah.
Or what, do you use a three-year average about how much psychological service, how does that work?
Basically, we use last year. We estimate, this can be adjusted on, you know, we adjust the contract if we use way more services, or, you know, there's a reasonable expectation that you'll be about what you used last year. But if that varies, then we work it out.
And it's a pretty minimum amount because, amount of time because of her commitment at Southern Door.
Exactly, yeah, that's true.
Okay, we need a motion then to approve the 6603 agreement with Southern Door for the school psychologist services.
I move that we approve the 6603 agreement with Southern Door for the school psychologist services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Item B, the academic standards for 2016-17, and there are lots of them. Oh, my.
Don't say I didn't give any late notice.
That's right, that's right.
I think there's 200 pages. And those are, the science, the math, and the language existed before last year, this last year, and the state completed the social studies, which is new to the packet. So those are all the current state core standards, and, you know, we're working within that realm, so we need to by law approve those every year, so that's what I'm asking.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the academic standards for the 16-17 school year as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Lots of reading.
All right. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Item C, the seclusion and restraint report, and we did have that from Kathy. So Steve, did you want to comment?
Yes, I will. You know, this actually seems strange, but there's good rationale for this report. Through the years in special education, schools had tried padded rooms and, you know, some unique applications to controlling students that have behavior issues. And this report is intended by the government to make sure that school boards are aware of what types of restraint activities and what kind of seclusion activities are going on in your school, and, you know, there is no school district that doesn't have any instances of seclusion or restraint. But, you know, there are even state laws mandating training of teachers and other aides on how they handle restraint, and what you can do and what's allowable. Some districts have training in it because they have a lot of students that fall in this category. I would say the report's well done. It illustrates that we're not using seclusion and restraint that often, but in times that we have to use it, we use it and we document it.
Does this mean we only have four students that we've had to use seclusion or restraint for, because we've got student A, B, C, and D?
Right.
Yeah. And that's fairly common.
Yes.
I was in Michigan, and when I did a report, and I had 67 instances, and 65 were the same student.
Most of it's student B.
Good question. Steve, can you tell me, I know when we met with the special ed teachers in a focus group earlier?
Yes.
Then they talked about the training, just the overall training piece. How often do our staff get training on seclusion and restraint? I guess this is for my own education.
You know, really, and what I did when I was reading the report was, that's a question because that's an exposure a school district has. And if you haven't trained your staff, now Kathy is very up to speed on this issue also, and that's one of the things that we need to talk about going forward. We're trying to develop training for paraprofessionals and our teacher aides, as well as teacher training in certain areas. This is a topic that needs to be addressed. Number one, when's the last time we had training? Number two, how many people need it? So we're following that, and you'll get a report on that as we move forward.
Well, Steve and I are a real strong advocate for the debriefing piece. You know, that's trauma, and it's trauma for the student as well as for the teacher. And I look at this report, and I see that we have a teacher that has had to do this quite a bit, and I just would be, I would really like to advocate just the capacity to debrief, you know, whether that's meeting with you, or Kathy, or somebody, so that teachers are supported in this process.
That's probably one of the most important pieces of that, yeah, the follow-up and the debriefing of, you know, and sometimes that leads to more training, and, you know, you don't know what direction it's going to go. Sometimes it just can be emotional support. But I agree, and that's, I don't have the answer for you tonight on when's the last time we had training or how much, but we'll get the answer for you.
I appreciate your point.
And not only, Steve, I bet you're taking this away, but this could help prioritize which teachers, based on these students, if you're going to prioritize which training, because you're going to know where these students are going into the classrooms and such.
And, you know, that's a really good comment. Most of the time, you know, in reverse of what we think, we almost always think older kids are bigger problems. Well, you know, they're bigger and stronger, and, but most of the restraint-seclusion happens early on, so the training probably is more important even there than it is up until the end.
Okay, we need a motion then to accept the seclusion and restraint annual report.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Item D, City of Sturgeon Bay requests to close one polling place for recall election. Lisa, I think this is something you wanted on the agenda.
This came to me from Stephanie Reinhardt, the clerk for the City of Sturgeon Bay. The school district has several wards in the city that have electors, and the one ward has only eight registered voters. And Stephanie said that the school district has the authority, per the Wisconsin Governmental Accountability Board, to dictate that a polling place be closed, and that polling place be combined with another. And that's her proposal, is to close the Michigan Street polling place, where there are just, at this time, those eight registered voters, and combine it with the JC polling As the memo says, her rationale is it would save the staffing programming of multiple machines and overall cost of the election of the City of Sturgeon Bay.
Would those people be?
And she will, she will send them, she will send those people, those registered voters in that one block, she'll send them letters advising them of where the polling place is, and I also think that on the day of election, I don't see it here, but they will post something on that usual Michigan Street polling place advising them to go to the JC location.
Should we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the suggestion of the City of Sturgeon Bay to close one of the polling places and combine it with the JC.
Second.
We have a second? Okay, discussion? Nothing to save the district money?
Yes.
Makes sense.
This is costly enough, so if we can save some dollars, that would be good.
Stephanie also has a vacation planned, and she will leave to get it all done, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Employee handbook, it's that time of year, Steve.
Yes. The approvals in the copy I had seen, or the changes, were outlined in red. I think you had the same thing. And you noticed that we didn't change anything in substance. It's mostly date changes, but that doesn't mean that it doesn't need to be looked at, and, you know, that's something that is, how much of a priority you want to make it, there's some areas in it that have to be addressed. So that will be a topic of board work sometime during this coming year. But right now, we're good with just the date changes, and that would suffice an updated handbook.
And then the salary ladder has been changed.
The salary ladder has been adjusted, and that was always pre-approved by the board, and it is the same.
So we need a motion then to approve the employee handbook, which will need to be distributed to the staff at the beginning of the year.
I move that we approve the 2015-2016 employee handbook.
Is there a second?
No, 2016-2017.
Yeah.
Take it back. 16-17 employee handbook.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And you made a good point. Anytime through the year, if we find some goodness to update something, we have the opportunity to change that if it's sold, which is what you just, okay, very good.
I have a question about that, too. At the county level, we have our, we have employees sign off that they review the employee manual?
The back page.
Yeah. Do we do that annually?
Page 31.
That was kind of my question. Did we sign that?
Sorry?
That was my question. Should we sign this as well on the board? Do I sign the handbook? That's kind of a personal question, I guess.
I think you did. Was that your work and stuff?
Oh, yeah, Roger. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? If not, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Item F, enrollment updates. Steve?
Yes, thank you. I had done a, I worked with the secretaries, they had done, a 4K through 12 enrollment status for me as of yesterday, and it was 595 was the total school enrollment. Now, I understand in speaking with two of the gals that we had registration today, and it looks like we had a number of new students. So as we go through these benchmark times of the year, I'll be updating, and next week, you'll get another update on enrollment, and I'll keep track of the open enrollment out, open enrollment in, so we'll also add those numbers. But as of right now, they have not changed to any degree at all.
And that will fluctuate until the first day of school or even after?
Well, until the third.
Third Friday, yeah.
It'll fluctuate all year round.
Yes, especially open enrollment in and out.
Yes.
Item G, annual meeting presentations reviewed. I know Steve and staff have been very, very busy getting all this ready.
Well, yeah, and I just, the principal's on here right now. We had a special meeting, I just wanted to report to you.
Kathy's here.
Kathy's there. Hi, Kathy. We are talking about the nature, in different schools, you know, you get a different, completely different kind of a report from one level to the other, and it seems a little disjointed in the presentation, especially, you know, board members are used to the jargon in a school, but a lot of times, the general public is not, and we end up making the annual meeting too confusing by a dissimilar format. So we're trying to format the information so it's comparable, but it is precise to the levels that they're working, and they want to make sure that we give a good, open presentation on the status. It always is helpful when your school is performing really well. You don't have to worry about the numbers you're presenting. And we're, shouldn't say we, I'm two weeks old. The school district has done remarkably well. The data on student performance continues to be really good. And so then the other part is, we'll do, we've had a lot of financial change in, you know, recently in this last year, so we're going to give a financial update that will show last year's budget, last year's actual, next year's budget. Then we're going to do fund balance analysis, where we were two years ago, what it looks like going forward. You know, that's all necessary, because you have to start getting in a position, so you look at referendums down the road, and this is where we start examining the analysis of what's that going to be. You know, we added, did some salary adjusting for employees, and, you know, that was, that's a big undertaking. It was a, it was a needed necessity, but now we have to put it in the budget and understand what its impact on it, on us is going forward. So that will all be part of the financial presentation. And I'm taking all the credit here, and Nina's sitting down at the end of the table, actually doing all the work, so. But that's just to give you an overview of what you can expect at the approval stage.
Any questions or comments or input anyone has, or you'd like to see at the end of the meeting?
I just, I think the consistent approach is wonderful, because I think you're dead on, obviously, you know, because we don't want to confuse a lot of people, and even for me, all the acronyms and jargons, you know, it's different in every community, and so, yeah, consistent message is going to help.
Yeah, it almost makes you sound like you're skirting the issue a little bit, if it's not understandable. So we're going to try to make it as understandable as we can.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Item H, priorities for the interim superintendent. Some of the board members had expressed a desire to have an opportunity to provide, Steve, with some input regarding your expectations. Steve, with some input regarding your expectations for the year, so here is that opportunity.
You know, as I put that on here, I thought, wow, kind of putting people on the spot a little bit. What I really would like to do is start to hear from you, and you can do it on phone message, or email, anything you want, but I would start to like to get ideas from you as to what you each think are items, and, you know, I'd like three or four, you can give me as many as you want, but, you know, I, I'm not looking, you know, to check how many hangers are in the coatroom or anything. We don't have to do that kind of stuff, and I, this board's never done that, anyway, but what I'm saying is, there's a diversity of things to do, and I have to start, you know, I have to first look up the definition of the word interim, and then start deciding what direction you want to go, and how we can facilitate that. So, why don't, you know, rather than tonight, try to create a smorgasbord, why don't you give it to me, and then we'll look at the suggestions and see where the common line runs, and I really ask that you do that, so, you know, just, any phone or email, any way you want to do it, it's fine.
Thank you. Okay, anyone have anything you want to offer tonight?
I like it.
For the next few weeks, other than the annual meeting, obviously.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Steve. And item I, we were asked to place this on the agenda. We did look for policies regarding press releases, and we weren't able to come up with anything, Steve and I both looked. We certainly can get samples from WASB, and also from Miola, which is our policy company. We can consult with them to get examples, and we could present them to the board for your review, and if you like some of them, we can adopt them. If you don't like them, we can modify them.
I, and maybe we do need policies in place, but I think it's kind of a common sense approach. There are releases that have to go out for the health, welfare, and well-being of the district. A water main broke, and we don't have school today.
Oh, yeah, that's a different kind.
You know, those things have to go out right away. Then there are releases that might affect staff, someone's leaving, some, you know, things like that. In that case, it would, what I would like to see us do is give a professional courtesy, or the right thing to do courtesy, and maybe advise staff, so staff can hear it first before they see it on the radio station of Dark County Daily News. They could, you know, if staff can get an email advising them first of what's happening. And then, the third one that I had in mind was if it's a press release that really is coming from the school board, or on behalf of the school board, that school board members be able to look at it first to have agreement of what's coming. That's my simple three-step process.
What I would add, depending on the depth of a policy, is, you know, as long as we're consistently following all the board policies, what Rogers rules, and all this protocol stuff, generally, you know, staying within the protocol, and we're all going to be on the same page, you're going to have a quorum, be things are voted on, because I, you know, that's, that's kind of the emphasis, is, you know, we stick to the protocol that we're all supposed to be following, and that's probably going to keep us pretty on the right track most of the time.
Well, we can seek out some policies and administrative rules, and bring them back to the board. Steve, I think you can access some of those from Miola.
You know, you'd be surprised, you know, how often does this happen? Not very often, you know, I, but I was in Mishikot for the Stephen Avery making of a rooter incident, and I had to send press releases immediately, and, you know, even getting, even getting all board members on board with the fact that they could read it before I sent it was a problem. So, you know, in the extreme, you just have to do the best you can. When you've got a little time, and you've got a discussion that you can hold, then it's a little easier to do that. But I don't know if there's a perfect way, we'll look for some samples. I work closely with that Miola school board policy in five different school districts, so I know them pretty well. But, you know, there isn't a policy for everything, so we'll just see what they have, and see if we can adapt it.
Well, I, to every policy, there's an exception. And I think that's the reason, that's why our communication needs to be solid, and there's always going to be that exception to every policy, and our policies as we start to study all of them, and I think we have to be dynamic.
It's a common sense approach. I'm not looking to look at every press release that you and Kathy and Adam have to put out of this school district for things that go on. That's your, that's your function.
Yeah.
I mean, if it involves the school board, to the extent that it was at the request of the school board, or a statement by the school board, I would like the school board to be able to see it. That's my take on it.
Understand. You know, we can add more, we need to have some work sessions on some of these items, and even decide if they're policy issues, or if they're just procedural matters that we can clear up there, so, you know, that's, that's fine.
Okay, that concludes our open session, then, and we need a motion to convene an executive session.
Some move.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Dave?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, we will adjourn to executive session.